I would like to call a regular Board of Education meeting on January 28th. The order, please rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Welcome Kelly.
Ms. Gutterfield, here. Mr. Kaseleal.
Delayed.
Ms. Flynn.
Delayed.
Mr. Rakewski.
Excused.
Stadler.
Here.
Mr. Singh.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Ms. Huer.
Here.
Mr. White.
And I'm here. Fire exits mat.
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
Alright, tonight we have two workshops. One is, the first workshop is employee recognition and Dr. Landau is going to present for that.
Alright, we started the superintendent blog that goes out every couple of weeks. A few months ago, we started recognizing employees. Recognizing employees who are going above and beyond in their jobs. And we started recognizing students for leadership and kindness. And it's been really fun to do that. So I've been asking department heads, principals, other people in the district to nominate people for this. And it's very unscientific. We take the nominations and we put them in the blog, but we wanted to make it a little bit more formal. And so we want to start inviting some of our employees and our students to the very beginnings of board meetings to give them a certificate, to put the description of what they're doing for the district kind of on the record for the board and also to, once we've done the certificates, to do a group photo with the board when we're done. And so tonight, we're starting with a couple of our employees. We had a couple of those that were slated to come, but they had some family stuff come up at the last minute. And in future meetings, we're going to invite students who get this designation and other employees as well. But we're going to start off with you folks tonight. The first person I'd like to talk about really briefly is Mike Penaccio. Mike Penaccio is a staple here in the Beacon City School District. With 35 years of service in the district and community, he is the longest standing member of the facilities team. These days, he's part of the Rombaut Middle School Night Group and he is integral in making sure the building is ready for the many community organizations that use it after hours. He is always willing to accommodate any needs they have and he does it with a smile. Mike is always willing to help out with extra work on short notice and is so dedicated that he even stops in to check on the building on his days off. And I witnessed that one time. And also, we're not, I'm Brian, Mr. Solteschner, we're in the back of the building and we saw you driving by, not figuring your schedule, checking on things. The district is very grateful to have Mike as a part of our team for so many years. So Mike Penaccio, we'd like to give you the certificate if you want to come up. And congratulations. Oh, we're going to go a little picture.
Thank you.
And extra part of this for just Mike is we're going out to lunch this summer, right?
That's it.
So, alright, our next person is Tracy Geida. Tracy is Sergeant's math teacher assistant for the past 13 years. She started 18 years ago in the district as a teaching assistant at JB Forrestal, working in several different classrooms. In addition to her teacher assistant work, she also leads Sergeant Student Council. The students at Sergeant do a great deal of community service for Sergeant and the community as a whole. These activities include cards for veterans at Christmas and Valentine's Day, a winter and spring food drive and coat drive. They give back to a sergeant classroom, this year it was the music room, and earth day cleanup, fill the backpack and fill the stocking, as well as running the school store. Ms. Geida described what she enjoys most about her work as Sergeant Students, and I quote, "I enjoy watching kids grow and excel and seeing them get excited about learning and giving back to their community in Sergeant. It is very rewarding." I also want to add that Tracy volunteered to be part of the strategic planning committee this year and has made huge contributions in that. And honestly, when I read this description, I get kind of tired thinking about all the stuff that you're doing, but it's also very inspiring. And so thank you for everything you're doing for the community, for our students, for Sergeant School. We all benefit from your presence, so thank you and congratulations. Alright, and since it's my personal goal to make board members get up every once in a while, we're going to do a little group shot with our first two employee recognitions right in front of the microphones here. Or behind the mics in front? I don't know where we are.
On the side here?
I'm not used to these microphones.
Or do you want the pitch in the background?
What do you think, Tom?
I don't think you need that in the background. If you go there. You don't need that, right John?
Mr. PR.
Our under-. I'm not good at arranging, but we're going to make you guys.
Not getting it, Kelly. Alright, close it just a little. There we go. Here we go. Actually, where are your certificates?
Nope. The rest of us have done that. We're with the.
Here we go.
Alright, thank you very much. Thanks for having me. Really appreciate it.
Alright, our second workshop is a presentation from Mr. John Giametta, Director of PE, Athletics, Recreation, and Health. The first one to go for budget presentations here.
Well, I wasn't able to give you guys the update of the year, so bear with me, I have a few slides and pictures. We had a very exciting year since I started and overall this past fall, we had a lot of good things going. So before we get going to the money, I'd like to talk about some fun things that we were able to do. What was our tailgate, our homecoming festivities that we had? We were able to run some light for him field. We were able to bring back a nice school atmosphere with that, to have a homecoming dance after that, a homecoming court for the kids of all the grades. And we received a lot of positive feedback from that, having the tailgate at the school, directly into a soccer game, directly into a football game, then directly into a dance. So we had a very fun-filled hectic day, but overall, I think it went really good. We are looking on building on top of this next year, especially with the turf field, so stay tuned for what else we have in store. With that, and I always thought it was a special thing that we do, we always give our senior recognition and ceremonies, and each of our sports team do do this by acknowledging their seniors with flowers at the different ceremonies that they do, so we have a couple of quick snapshots of that. Another one, we've made a transition this year from doing our Hall of Fame ceremony inside the VHS gymnasium as opposed to a football field. It was a more intimate setting that we were able to do. We had a great turnout this year. We're looking to build on numbers as that. You see the inductees that we had this year, Tori Kerr, Tori Alexander, Chelsea Dexter, and the 1983-84 girls spring track teams. A couple other events that we had this year, we had a memorial bake sale for Donna Peterson with the proceeds going to Earth Foundation for the soccer game. We were able to have a banner unveiling that we would like to do for our future Beacon athletes, anybody who is going to get a banner in our gymnasium. We do want to give them a recognition and ceremony during something like a basketball game. We had a couple of players that were able to play in the exceptional senior football game, that being Jody Candia and Trey Danino. Couple other things we were able to do, we were able to have a team march in the spirit of Beacon Day, it's something that we want to build upon. I'm hoping next year, we can have an exclusive athletics float, possibly towed by my truck, but anybody who wants to join into that, we try to boost up our athletics. I thought it would be a great idea, so if anybody has a trailer I could borrow, we might get the ball rolling a little bit more. The Elks Club hoop shoots, the second year in a row, we were able to do it. Once again, a great turnout at Rombaut Middle School, a good collaboration with the Elks Club. And we were even able to have some literature handed out about some issues going on with mental health and awareness by Diane Tanzi, which I'll get to you in a few minutes. And then finally, our varsity modified girls basketball teams. We were able to go to Pace University and see Beacon alumni Lauren Shetter play. They were also given a tour of the facilities and it was a great look into what the collegiate athlete life was like for a lot of our young ladies. A couple other special sessions we have stemming on wanting to give some more focus to students who were considering moving on in athletics at collegiate level. Mark Mineweaver, who is a college athletics recruiting professional, and he's actually a major league baseball scout, was able to come to Beacon High School to give a presentation for our student athletes and their parents. He was great, he was very hands-on, and I think he stuck around for about an hour and a half after, just talking with individual parents about what they thought their sons and daughters were going to be able to achieve. And one thing that I liked about this gentleman was his main focus was on college first and choosing the right college academically before you're looking at the athletic aspects of it. He wanted to be a fit for you before you decide to look into athletics, which Mike thought was a great message. And then our, excuse me, our Unity Community Workshops that we've been attending, run by Ali Muhammad, bridging the gaps between community members, building a new, stronger, unified beacon. We were able to attend the first session, he just recently had the second on Saturday, which our basketball coaches were able to go to with Miss Soto. The first session, Dr. Landau, myself, and a couple of the coaches were able to go, just trying to bridge the gap in the community, show that we are in support of a better beacon, in support of cooperation with everybody involved, so I feel like it's a strong stance for us to be present at these forums. Elementary phys ed from last year, from adding our two new phys ed teachers, we were able to move into the four-day cycle, it's going excellent. One of our focuses was looking at large group activities instead of smaller group, basically making sure that all the students in these classes are able to participate as much as possible, so really looking at our curriculum and trying to figure out what the best way to get to all our students and provide proper physical activity is. So that's something that we're working on as the year is going on. We're taking a lot of notes about our facilities, what we need to do, different activities, equipment, so on and so forth. Field trips, we were able to send Sergeant in South Avenue to MetLife Stadium to end their football unit, to get a tour of Giant Stadium and to look at the facilities in front of Office Access. We are looking into the other elementary.
Don't forget Jet Stadium as well.
I call it Giant Stadium. Now it's open. No, it was a wonderful opportunity brought forward by our elementary phys ed teachers, so we are looking to continue and provide more field trip opportunities for all the schools. Student of the Month, that was brought on by Brianna Togan. We're now doing Student of the Month, Phys Ed Students of the Month, I should say, in all of our elementary buildings. Then the Sergeant Gym, we were able to, with Mike Carefano, with working with the PPA, we were able to do some painting there to update that facility there. The Secondary Phys Ed, our ninth grade curriculum focusing on healthy lifestyles is often running. Actually, the ninth grade students, starting next week, are going to begin their CPR, first aid instruction by our instructors. The PE notebooks, which you can see in the pictures here, every student in the school is provided with one. Not only is it giving positive aspects of physical activity, but it's also including the Personal Fitness Plan, a lot of information about body composition, flexibility, muscular strength, muscular endurance. It's an all-encompassing notebook that we're going to look to build upon and revisit it every year to make sure it's updated. Elective-based PE grades 10 through 12. Our high school PE staff has done an excellent job of trying to offer more and different activities than what we're used to doing. Our 10 through 12 graders, and we're constantly looking into things, I know I mentioned last year, getting the kayaks for the pools, that being an example of something different that we're trying to get into, rather than your typical basketball, volleyball, baseball-type curriculum. We're trying to step outside the box, offer some new things and give our kids some different choices. Senior Field Day, we just wrapped it up with the high school staff. This year, we're going to be offering a Senior Field Day, which they're really excited about. And I believe what they're going to do is the students are going to be split by the four elementary schools that they graduated from, to make teams from that. A cool idea, Mr. Mahan, Mr. Sabatell, Mr. Collins, and Mr. Mariko, they're kind of front-run that. We're looking at different activities, but it should be a really fun day, so I'm excited about that. The sixth grade project adventure, Mike Mullins and Adam McParland on the left, we were able to send them upstate to Vermont to get some training on our project adventure curriculum that we're looking to put into place, our sixth grade. The goal is to get the low elements running for next year for our sixth grade, then the following year, part of the three-year plan is going to have the high elements put in place for the eighth grade students. We'll talk about that more. And then the middle school field trips, we've been able to go bowling with the entire middle school, or excuse me, the entire sixth grade, walkway over the Hudson for our ADL classes. And once again, looking at different opportunities we have on our field trips. With me today, able to bring Diane Tanzi, our high school health teacher, I wanted to try to explain about all of the different things, different organizations she brings into her curriculum, but I don't think I do it enough justice. She's very hands-on with what she's doing, very passionate about mental health and wellbeing. I know that was a subject that we talked about last year, but you can see from the list, and she doesn't have to go crazy into detail, she's bringing in so many different organizations to give our students some more knowledge about these issues that are going on. She's actually worked for the past two years on changing the current health curriculum into a more project-based, hands-on curriculum. Last year, I told her she did the birth using a ping pong ball and balloon, which I thought was extraordinary, it was part of her observation. This year, she was putting the biodots on her hand, which gave different blood. It was very interesting. But I just wanted to bring her up quickly, just to talk about a couple of the special things that she's doing, and then I'll get right back to you. Diane?
Well, thank you for having me. So I just wanted to highlight some of the changes. We're trying to go to more skill-based curriculum, which means we're teaching skills instead of content knowledge. So actually making decisions, decision-making, goal-setting, advocacy, they're all embraced in all the different lessons as we're teaching functional knowledge, like mental health awareness and sex education. So some of the agencies that I have coming in are local people that we've already used and we've had connections with for years, but not many people know about them. And my goal was to really get some other areas where students are having issues outside of school, you know, we have a nice safety net and we can really be able to help them within a school setting, but once they leave us, at least they have some resources and they know how to access that information and what resources to use appropriately. So part of getting in NAMI, having more of a Grace Smith House present, it's things that are within our local community that do so much great things already. One of the highlights, we're going to have students go to the Love Schenher Conference at Dutchess Community College on April 11, or I'm sorry, yep, 3/11. We're also going to do a mental health and wellness fair showcasing what all of these areas do and all of these people do. So I'm also the SAD advisor, so we're trying to bring back SAD and we've been at a lot of local events and using local resources like the Elks Club, and they really provide a lot of resources for us too. So in conclusion, really just revamping what we already are using and really going on to a skill-based curriculum, where we're teaching students how to make healthier decisions and it's based on advocacy and those essential skills that are really based on the New York State standards. The other biggest difference was actually incorporating mental health into our curriculum because the standards have changed. And really getting into a lot of other schools is one of my goals as well. Specifically, we're trying to do some things with SAD, where we're going to go into elementary schools and potentially do some networking there. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diane. So moving on, just a few updates that I wanted to bring to your attention here. Our boys' March, the soccer team was able to be section semifinalists this year, played a great game down at Somers. Our league champions this year are varsity boys and girls soccer, and we were able to have, excuse me, seven total scholar-athlete teams, meaning they averaged 90 above with their entire team roster, that being girls swimming, girls tennis, boys and girls cross-country, girls volleyball, girls soccer, and boys soccer. We had an all-state athlete and also an all-section athlete, Devin Lamb, this year on our boys' soccer team, along with John Meznick and Alex Strumpiller. And for across-country, Zach Kader was made second-team Law County. With that, a couple of numbers and statistics for you. Starting this fall, we were able to offer seven total boys' sports in our program and 12 total girls' sports in the program, totaling 19. Number of boys participating this fall was 160 and girls was 175. Currently with our winter sports, we were able to offer 10 boys and six girls, the difference being depending on the seasons, there's different type of sports that are offered for both males and females totaling 16. In the boys, we had a total of 141 athletes participating, and girls, a total of 80. For spring sports, we're planning to offer seven boys' sports and eight girls' sports. And with the numbers with that, to be determined on what we get with the spring, but you can look at a couple of the totals at the bottom. The total of boys that participated this year to date is 301, while girls is 235, and the total fall participation overall was 335, and total winter participation was 221. So depending on the different sport, any amount of athletes that are in that sport, you do get a difference with the number of athletes total for the season. Some things that we're going to be doing this year, or we have done this year, designated weight training sessions for each of our male and female sports team, that's one thing we were adamant about, the more off-season opportunities our students had to work out. We were able to break the weight room into different times for both males and females, depending on the sport and activity. The after-school tutoring and supervision provided in the VHS cafeteria, a great resource that we have. This way, students can use the cafeteria for studying time, as opposed to being unsupervised before their practices may begin. RMS scoreboards, the update with the high school scoreboards, we were able to complete the track renovations resurfaced, as well as the tennis court renovations resurfacing. We're continuing on with the parent informational meeting for each of our sports seasons, they have been very valuable, they're giving a lot of information, and our coaches have been very hands-on with that. The ninth grade PE notebook is completely put into place for our classes, CPR, first aid, as I mentioned. We're continuing with the athletic code of conduct revisions that we want to bring to the attention of the policy committee come year's end to get things updated. Batted cage alterations at the baseball and softball field, collaboration with the school-to-work students, so in the athletic hallway that we have where most of our banners are, our school-to-work athletes, or excuse me, our school-to-work students are able to update all of the cases that we have. Right now, they're putting in the scholar-athlete awards in the cases along with team pictures. We're going to be doing a fitness fun night on March 1st, 2019, at the Rombaut Middle School. We're working on getting different physical activities and vendors put into place for that, along with Marion Cirillo. Parking lot banners, I think everybody saw, you know, we're trying to go with the college campus theme, get some more banners up. We were able to get that done this year, I think it looks great. You never know, Mr. Solteschner, Rombaut could be in store for next year, we'll see what happens. The gymnasium banners, I can say, are completely up to date. We have every athlete, every year, every all-league, all-section. That was where my goal was coming in, it only took me a year and a half, but I can say that the high school gym is completely up to date with the banners that we have on the walls, that's will be the trophy cases, and that's summer school PE credit recovery for our high school phys ed students. So things that we'd like to do next year, we want to continue progress towards elective-based classes for 10th to 12th grade students. Once again, we're looking at different forms of physical activities and things that we can do to give our students more opportunity. Continue development, the project adventure, sixth and eighth grade curriculums. And then for purchases, purchases on a new turf field, with the new turf field, there are going to be things such as benches, tables, water coolers, tent, pylon, field markers, chains, goalposts, flags, a lot of different things that we are planning on investing in, so with the new turf field, we'll have these new things as well. Another thing and another goal that we have for next year, our assistant coaches. So currently, in the sports of soccer, both boys and girls, basketball, boys and girls, and baseball, softball, we do not have a paid assistant coach. As of right now, we are in Section 1, Conference 2, which is a total of 22 schools. Out of these 22 schools, 14 of these schools have paid assistant coaches for each of these positions. The others at the bottom have a percentage of assistant coaches for these positions, and there are only two schools in this conference that don't have paid assistants, and that's us and Arnsley. And Arnsley's actually gone to the Board of Education as well to ask for this. Couple of the benefits that we have here, more hands-on, more teachers in the classroom, more coaches on the field, is better instruction to our athletes. Specialized instruction per position, player evaluations, coaching recommendations, and also scouting out of weight locations. The increased supervision and safety in case of emergency and the head coach needs to lead the game practice, so a lot of times, we'll send the GED baseball coach down to a game, if for some reason, the student has to go to a hospital, something happens and that coach needs to go with the student. Or it puts you in quite a predicament if you don't have another certified person there with them, so that's one of the main reasons, and it's the safety and the concern of our athletes. Have we been able to get it done? Absolutely, we have, but this is just one more area that we'd be able to provide more safety to our kids. The off-season instruction, more coaches involved to increase workout opportunities in the off-season, so one thing that I was working with the teachers' union with and things that we're seeking about is if we are going to add more assistant coaches, that means we should be able to provide more opportunity throughout the course of the year. So if one coach that we couldn't expect to work for 12 months of the year, continue to work with athletes, if we have multiple, they can split up the shifts that we're able to train our athletes. And then finally, the consistency of attendance of paid assistant coaches, so right now, a lot of coaches will have volunteer assistants. Volunteer as in they're not being paid, so if it doesn't work out that they can't get to the practice or a game on a Monday or a Wednesday or a Saturday because of something going on, there's no obligation for them to be there. So having a paid assistant coach will help us to be more accountable and will keep these coaches around our kids longer. Finally, three-year goal, well, I have three-year goals and my five-year goals. Three-year goals that we have, one being a pole vault pit for our track and field, it's definitely seen its day, it's moving on, but that's something that we do need to remedy quickly, just for safety reasons in itself. We'd like to paint and resurface every gym floor in the district, elementary schools, middle school, high school alike, we would like to update these things, and I think we can get it done in the next three years, working with Anthony DeMao. Updated equipment in the weight room, the more equipment we have, the more up-to-date things we have, the better opportunity our kids are going to have to advance on, I'm a big believer in that. The trophy case updates, like I mentioned, it really bothers me that they're not up-to-date, but I will get them up-to-date. Competitive cheer, we want to move on to have more competitive cheer going, I think it'd be a great, great thing along with our new turf field to come in, getting more girl athletes and more female athletes involved, or athletes in general. The dance team, continuing on to look how we can have successful dance teams perform. Retractable belt barriers for our gymnasiums, they can also be used for different events happening in either the high school, middle school, or any school for that matter. Our sixth grade project adventure, after year, we'd like to develop that into a notebook similar to what we have with the ninth grade curriculum. And finally, the eighth grade project adventure, once again, using the high elements in the gym, having them updated. Secondary PE electives, continuing to explore that route. Elementary PE curriculum revisions, which at this year's end, that's where we plan to meet with the teachers to say, okay, what worked, what didn't, what should we do, and then continue to look at our curriculum. Permanent sub-PE teacher, this would not only help with a regular PE teacher pulling out, but if we wanted to get our kids to the pool more, a lot of times for that instruction, you would need a PE teacher to do it. Well, if we pulled one from the elementary school, we could then provide the permanent sub-PE teacher in their place while they were up with the kids that are using the pool. And then finally, like they said, the swimmin', we're very adamant about getting our elementary students, K through 8, into the pool. So those are a couple of goals that we have for the next few years, that we're going to continue progress towards. And finally, the five-year goals, these are the same ones that I mentioned last year. Every student that graduates from VHS has been offered CPR, first aid, we started that this year, I'm very happy, I'm very passionate about this, I think it's important. Every student that graduates from VHS will develop a personal fitness plan. We're continuing exploring, you know, how We're continuing exploring, you know, how we can really focus on this goal as I just feel like a personal fitness plan, no matter what it is, whether it's weight training, cardiovascular, flexibility, whatever, I just want everybody to be able to achieve that and to bring it on past high school. Increasing enrollment of BCSD students into intrascholastic athletics with hope of our turf field. Hopefully that we do get a string of athletes that do continue to come out. We're also working on motivating our students more, you may see on social media, we're trying to give more recognition to our students. We're doing Player of the Week and so on and so forth, trying to promote the positivity of what we can offer. And then finally, providing year-long opportunities for our student athletes, organize weight room training sessions for females and males. We're trying to do more camps, we're trying to do more clinics, we're trying to make it a year-long activity for these kids, not only to keep them off the streets, but to further develop our programs. So that concludes my presentation that I have. I'm more than willing to take questions now, wait till after, whatever you would like to do, I'm here for you.
Any questions for John?
Thank you for a great presentation, I'm happy to see all that you've done and that you're planning. I had a couple of questions, do we have a dance team now?
No.
We don't, I think that's great. I know from other districts that it's really successful and swimming K to eight is also great to see. I just wanted to mention that the painting of the sergeant gym, it looks awesome and I want to make sure it's noted that the PTO at Sergeant organized and fundraised and executed that project with the help of Mr. Carafano, but I want to make sure that it's noted that the PTO was instrumental in that happening.
Certainly.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah, a lot of progress and it's good to see. Can you give us an idea on a budgetary basis, looks like there's some new initiatives, what's the total additional spending that you contemplate?
About sixteen thousand four hundred.
Any other questions, Kristen?
You mentioned the summer school PE credit recovery, I know in the past, that's something that we were looking to reduce enrollment in. Are you tracking the data for that to make sure that students are achieving their PE goals during the school year?
We are and one of the things we're looking at is doubling up during the day. So what we're doing a lot of times is taking a student who needs additional credit and we're enrolling them in the same exact class that has the same exact test, that does the same exact activities. So it'd be like taking a kid and taking them, putting them into the same section of English and agree. So I think we can all agree, that's not the most beneficial practice to do. With our AEM PE sessions, different curriculum than what they're doing during the day. And then another option, if they don't want to do the AEM is offering the summer credit. The AEM PE starts at six-thirty A M, it's fourth school day. So they have options on what they want to do. So for instance, I have a parent of a junior who couldn't get their kid here for AEM PE, didn't want to make up the credit that way. Well, we are looking at the summer option, if that's something that you'd be able to do and it absolutely is going to work better for us.
So your emergency action plan, have you been revising it?
No, I have not currently.
Okay. Do you have provisions in there for example, like for heat stress or concussion injuries and stuff like that?
Well, we have mandated rules that we have to follow from New York State, one being the real field temperatures for both heat and cold. Our coaches, myself, our trainer, everybody's completely up to date with the different provisions as well as our concussion. Concussion provisions are very big right now, it's one of the highest priority things. So we are completely up to date with New York State standards and what we should be following. I have a meeting with the coaches before each of the seasons, fall, winter and spring, and we are able to review this information up to date. I get new documents from the state as they're updated, that's what's provided, that's what I follow. We can offer that and a lot of that is actually found online on our website.
And you mentioned we got plenty of equipment for the turf field and any thoughts about, I don't know how to put it outside, but like get access to it, some defibrillators in case you need it that quickly?
AEDs?
Yeah.
We will have a fully certified AED right at the turf field, that's the goal with that.
Okay. And how big landscape trailer do you need, how big trailer do you need?
Biggest you got.
I have, the Amos Core has a landscape trailer.
The bigger the trailer, the more teams.
Well, the Amos Core has a landscape trailer, so let's talk about that.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, I have a question about that.
Can I answer questions?
Yeah, are we also talking about contracts and stuff?
Unless you feel the need.
Well, if we are, just want to make sure it's included in the motion.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries eight zero. In reviewing the agenda, we do have an item to add to the agenda, it's going to be resolution zero-one-two-eight-one-nine-A. It reads as be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the memorandum of agreement dated one-twenty-eight-two thousand and nineteen between Beacon City School District and the Beacon Association of Office Personnel, extending the collective bargaining agreement that expires on June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen for three years, July first, two thousand and eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Another, any other items that?
Resolution of advocacy relating to the state budget on education.
So Craig, we will give that resolution, if you want to write it on that paper for me. We're going to name it resolution zero-one-two-eight-one-nine-B.
One-nine what?
One-nine-B.
B like paper. Zero-one-two-eight-one-nine.
Yeah, oh-one-twenty-eight-nineteen-B. Do you want to read it for the?
Should I read it now?
Sure.
Okay. In order to continue the advancements and improvement of education for our students as well as to keep pace with the current increases in inflation, the Beacon City School District Board of Education advocates for the overall two-point-two billion dollar increase in state aid as proposed by the New York State School Boards Association. Our district has been on the path of offering upgrades that help students. This includes controlling class sizes to improve student future interaction, adding electives urged by our student population, ensuring equity and coping with unpredictable physical planet issues. We continue to be limited on the property tax side by the nominal two percent tax levy cap and concerns of senior and lower-income taxpayers, making increases in state aid crucial for these strategies to be made real.
Craig, that was vetted by the Public Relations Committee Advocacy and Legislative.
Advocacy and Legislative.
Does anybody have any questions for Craig? All right, we'll add that as a number two.
Who will actually do so, well, I mean, I actually will ask the question when the item comes up.
Okay. Alrighty, any other revisions to the agenda? Seeing none, we're going to go to student or school presentations.
Hi, good evening, I'm Juliette Harvey, I'm co-president of South Avenue PTA. First, I'd like to thank the district and Anthony Damato for partnering with us. We recently installed some new play equipment in our outdoor facility. We got a ten-spin and a new climbing wall for South Avenue. And the PTA paperwork in the district helped us to install it, so we want to thank Anthony Damato for his help with that. And also, we'd like to just bring to the district's attention, if you haven't been to our facility, we'd love for you to come and visit while you're looking at the budgets for next year, PE budgets and facilities. We have some sub-par outdoor facilities at South Avenue that we'd love some attention paid to. And our indoor gym facility as well that has some issues. I think the district has done a great job in trying to create equity between the four elementary schools, but I think in this aspect, South Avenue as well below the other elementary schools. So I hope it's within the budget to think about these things and just to talk them through. We have some areas of concern too in the outdoor area, which is our grass, which is abysmal, there's not actually any real grass out there for the kids. And our outdoor blacktop area is in much need of repair, there's many cracks. And we as a PTA wanted to kind of spruce it up out there, but the people that we met with that would help us with paintings said, don't even do anything because it's going to not be able to even stay on that blacktop the way it is. So we'd like those two in the outdoor looked at for next year. And our inside gymnasium floor, it's been talked about, it was supposed to get waxed, it was supposed to get something done starting around three years ago. And year after year, that still hasn't had any attention paid to it, so we'd love something to happen there. And our basketball hoops have some serious issues in there. I think it's about twenty-five, maybe thirty years since anything's happened with those basketball hoops, but when they were put on there, the actual box that you shoot at isn't actually in the center. And this was brought to our attention by a fellow parent who has started a girls program after school, who is in another district, a basketball coach in the area, who's a parent at our district and has said that it's just not good quality at all. And we know just from seeing at the other elementary schools what beautiful basketball hoops they have going on and we'd like the same at South Avenue. So we're anxious to hear about any upgrades that can happen for us. We're also, you know, we love the partnership that happened this year, so in any way that that is helpful, that we can partner with the district, we'd love to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any parent groups? Seeing none, we're going to go to open to the public, seeing none, we're going to go to superintendent's report.
Tonight, just going to give a quick update on the strategic planning process before I start. Juliette, thanks for your comments and I know there's one thing that we're working on doing in this year's budget, I'm looking at and raise to get the pay part of the playground done with this year's money. And we'll take a look at the rest. I know a bit about the whole floor thing and I won't try to delve into that right now, but we'll take a look at the rest of the stuff too. All right, so just, this is just kind of a review, all of this stuff is still, I guess, in the draft stage. But, you know, the strategic planning group has been meeting, we had a meeting just the other day. We had our second fully retreat a couple of weeks ago. And again, we'll start with the mission statement to prepare every student for learning life and work beyond school. And this is some new work for us and forgive the look of the slides because I sort of got some of this language just last night and I wanted to put it out in front of the board. So one of the things that I came up in the strategic planning committee just the other day was the fact that we have some very powerful board goals and we wanted to find a way to use those board goals to really kind of shape the work. And so in talking with our consultants, he felt that the best way to sort of move forward was to create a few belief statements for this plan. And the way he described it, and I think it was a great description, is that these belief statements kind of become the the banks on the river or the guardrails on the highway or whatever metaphor you want to use. But that in every decision that we make moving like the strategy work forward, which I'll get to in a couple of slides, we always use these belief statements, which are kind of rephrased board goals. So again, this wording, we just kind of played with a little bit last meeting, it's not necessarily like the official piece, but I wanted to put it out there because I think it was important to me and it was important to members of the committee that we didn't sort of leave that board goal work behind, especially in the areas of equity, diversity and this culture of care idea. So we reworded the goals a little bit so they became more belief statements, but I wanted to put that in front of the board to make you aware that we're working to try to integrate this work in hopefully a powerful way. And again, this is lots of words on the page, but these are the skills and abilities that we want our students graduating with as part of this work. Communication, problem-solving, creative and critical thinking, collaboration slash independence and digital literacy. That all came from research the group did and also it came from the first thought exchange that we did with the community where we had, you know, over two-hundred participants kind of engaged in answering these questions. Attributes and dispositions are also areas that we want our graduates to have. Empathy, self-regulation, citizenship and community, curiosity, wonder, imagination and adaptability and flexibility. These also came from that thought exchange with community, but also a lot of conversation within the strategic planning group. And so this again, you know, forgive the look of this because I was just putting it together today, but so you have these things, the foundation of the plan is the belief statements, the mission statement, the skills and abilities and the attributes of our graduates, but then, you know, where does the real work happen in moving things forward? And so the group, the committee came up with four strategies that we'll be working on moving forward. The first one is to revise and realign district curriculum frameworks and maps so that they integrate that work that we were just looking at. To design and implement professional learning strategies that support the strategic planning work. To build and deploy an assessment philosophy and infrastructure that supports this work. And the last one to create a common definition and indicators of success for student engagement and productive learning practices. We discussed as a group, because this is a little overwhelming when you kind of look at this and you're like, oh my gosh, you know, we're at the starting line for most of these things. Great first step versus a district, we decided as a group was to be focused on strategy four actually as a starting place. Not to say that we won't be doing any work in the other strategies, but defining what student engagement looks like, feels like, et cetera, et cetera, to really create a common definition across the district of student engagement is a really powerful place to start. So when we talk about aligning professional learning strategies, a lot of that professional learning will be around engagement. And I know you know this, but a part of that engagement, a big part of that engagement is going back to those belief statements. And diversity is our strength, trying to create an equitable education, also building the culture of care in the district along with creating learning activities in our classrooms that really deeply engage students. I think another part of the work moving forward is identifying all the places where it's already happening in the district because it is. And we need to both identify and celebrate those places and really work on, you know, spreading it out. In terms of next steps for the group, February seventh, our committee meets one more time. Jonathan, our consultant, will work a bit more in fleshing out the plan. And then we're going to be on February seventh for several hours as a group to kind of put some finality to it. The action part of the plan will always be evolving and changing and, you know, based on feedback and things we're learning as we move forward. But the sort of the foundation of the plan itself, we're going to, we're going to try to finalize on February seventh to bring to the board for board approval on February eleventh or February twenty-fifth. So obviously, we're working on the budget through all of this and moving things forward, but I'll be working with my team and lots of other people in the district to try to really get some of that professional learning in place. Because we think a key kickoff part for us is both on March eighth, which is a professional learning day in the district and then also this summer. And so again, we've talked about this before, but we see professional development as being a really crucial part to moving this forward. So expect to see a lot of our thinking and planning in the budget work as well for that. Anybody have any questions about strategic planning? All right, that's it for me.
All right, thank you. All right, any committee reports and/or comments? Noah, any?
So I just wanted to first start off by saying from Dr. Mr. Giametta's presentation about the EDC system in high school, it's getting a lot of good feedback from the students. I know recently they just picked their next two units. The kids are really enjoying the option between, like this one is team handball and hockey or volleyball. So they're really enjoying doing picking sports that they want, so that's going really well. I wanted to congratulate Ayanda Rubalo, Jose Verzendes and Caleb Yoli for representing VHS at the Junior High Law County Music Festival this weekend. And I also want to say, Andy and I were talking during executive session how it's been a year since we were on the board. So we're talking about crazy time flies, and we're looking forward to getting the new members, looking for them, seeing, helping them learn. So it's definitely exciting and it's a, it's a, when, when Pat, she are here, so, so yeah, pretty much.
Thank you, Don.
I just want to start off by congratulating all those who participated in the Hudson Valley Regionals plastic art competition. Results came out, and I know a bunch of kids at Beacon won or were recognized for their work. So it's, they're having a viewing kind of session at CBD Pulse from, on February 8th from 7:00 to 9:30 PM at Stud League Theater. And they're also leaving work out for just general viewing from March 9th through Feb., March, from February 9th through March 3rd at the Finer Arts Building. I, I actually have work up there, which is nice, so if you would like to come see, we'll be up there for a while. We are also making plans for Black History Month, and they're currently pretty much underway. The student council is going to start selling, we're actually starting to sell T-shirts right now. They're going to sell bracelets also, kind of just to raise awareness. And we're also having an assembly on Wednesday that doesn't sell out, focusing on the state aid stuff as well.
Andy, is that, is that an assembly for the high school or is it for all first students?
I believe it's for all students.
Okay. I think Mike and I were already talking about it, so they're excited.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
James?
We have a policy committee scheduled for February 21st, 7:00 PM. The agenda is not yet set. I have no other comments.
Melissa?
I have no comments tonight, thanks.
Anthony?
Diversity Committee will follow the policy committee, I mean 15 on the same night. I do part of that, I know the board, I'm busy. That's all I got.
Kristen?
I'm going to do the upsee, update of the facilities and, what is that?
Grounds, operations.
Operations.
Thank you. Really struggling tonight. It's, I'm, I'm having like, I'm having nerves because Mike Rukowski sent me a text at like 6:00 AM, like, "Are you ready to do this?" So, hearing this, the pressure, okay. The current capital project, which is approximately $8.7 million, a little less than $9 million. The bids are coming in on February 12th. We'll be awarding the contracts at the second meeting in February, which is the 25th of February, February, I believe. The construction begins on the turf field between April and May, with the rest of the work taking place in the schools over the summer, with the mind of working with administrators to provide as little disruption for any summer programming as possible. The last meeting, we talked about the opportunity for us to go out for, when we'd be able to go out for another capital project without an increase to the levy, that, the total of that project would be approximately $8.4 million. We could go out as early as December of this year, or early in 2020. And the next facilities and operations meeting is on February 20th. He didn't tell me which time, but we typically meet at seven o'clock. And I'll just roll into that, the Sustainability Committee will be meeting prior to that at 6:00. And we're using the framework, right now, the work that we're doing there is going through the Green Ribbon Schools program to identify how we'll structure out our goals for the work there.
Great, thank you. Craig?
Yeah, Facilities and Operations, I think February 12th will be a very interesting day. I happen to love bid openings. It's sort of like the Academy Awards, let's see the envelope, please. And that's when you find out exactly what you can do. The structure of what we're putting out there includes what are called alternates. These are things that can be bid upon that we may or may not be able to afford, depending upon how big the main bids come in. So it'll be, at that date, we'll, we'll have a better idea of exactly what we can do and what we won't. So I'm looking forward to that. On the Public Relations Advocacy and Legislative, you heard me read the resolution, which we'll deal with shortly. And I think I'll just leave it at that for now. I do want to say, however, that on this presentation here about the strategy planning, it reminds me of an image of a multi-story building. What we, what we see there is sort of the top floor, the vision thing, and the general direction of where we're going. And beneath that is a floor that you have strategies on where you get more specific and figure out exactly what would those vision things lead to. Below that, you get down to the, who's going to do it, when are they going to do it, how are we going to fund it? And that takes you down to the basement, your foundation, which is, do we have the infrastructure, the personnel, and the money? So it'll be interesting to see where we go with this. We're off to a good start.
Cora?
Yeah, I don't have a committee report tonight, but I just wanted to let everyone know that the next Wellness Committee meeting is going to be Wednesday, February 6th at 4:00 PM. And as always, there will be childcare, so please come again.
Meredith?
I attended the Curriculum Committee meeting on January 16th, and a couple of exciting things there. Principal Soto is, is working with Project Lead the Way. She's met with a site coordinator to talk about incorporating that more into the Beacon High School. And they're actually going to do a field trip to Hyde Park where they've been using Project Lead the Way successfully. That's happening in February. She's also moving forward with the National Academy Foundation, which I think I mentioned at the last meeting. This is a curriculum that would, would be supported, support and be supported by Project Lead the Way. They would work together. Curriculums within computer science, engineering, and hospitality. And it's, it sounds like it's about a year of planning before you really could put it into place, but so far, they're, my impression was, what is the budget impact as a good board member? And so far, we have the staff to, to do it without, without any budget impact, so it's exciting to get started on that. River of Words is happening K through 12, actually, and Eric was encouraging people to contact him to, to put that into the, put that into motion.
We actually have, we met with elementary students last Friday, and our fourth grade classes, of course, the district will each be received.
Oh, great, okay. Right, and this is sort of a, this is a teaser, just to encourage teachers to take advantage of the program?
Yes, yes and no. What we found is that we will, it'll also be a way to incorporate it into the existing curriculum.
Great. And science, too, right, or is it just?
Yes, and science, yes.
And that is about it there. And I wanted to ask, I just confirmed my travel schedule for work today. I cannot make the Duchess County School Board Association meeting on February 7th, which is Thursday, so I wanted to put that out there to see if anyone else could. It's the state budget review. And then there is a NISBA Capitol Conference where if a board member could go, that'd be great. I cannot, I'll, I'll still be out of town. It's February 10th and 11th. So Kelly Lappin is looking to hear whether or not anyone could make it as soon as possible.
Is it this Thursday?
It is this, yes, a week from Thursday.
A week?
Yeah, February 7th. And then the Capitol Conference up in Albany would be February 10th and 11th. Do you, do you have any?
I might be able to do it on February 7th. I haven't decided about the 10th and 11th.
Okay. Well, let me know as soon as you can. I'm sorry, that can't make that. And that's all.
I have no comments. Do you say the Consent Agenda permits the Board of Education make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included? Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the Consent Agenda may so indicate, and the item would be considered voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Is there anything from the Consent Agenda that a board member would like pulled? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve 11.01 through 11.10.
So moved.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried eight oh with thanks. There was a donation in there, 10.1, 10.07. All right, we added two resolutions to the agenda, so there will be 12.01 will be Resolution 012819A, which is the resolution that was previously read, which is a memorandum of agreement dated 1/28/2019 between Beacon City School District and the Beacon Association of Office Personnel, extending the collective bargaining agreement that expired on June 30th, 2018 for three years. So the contract will run from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021. And apologize that this wasn't written format on the agenda as it was signed by the collective bargaining unit today, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So this will be added to the agenda, so people will be able to read it and not have to go back and listen to read it. Is there, all those, I'm sorry?
Need a motion?
Need a motion. So moved?
So moved. A second.
So we have... Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried eight oh. I just would like to comment on this. This is the first time in my time on the board that we've had all contracts settled. When was the last time that happened, Emery?
I don't know, very long time ago.
That's, that's remarkable work. Good job, board. Good job, administrators for negotiating teams are busy. So really good job. All right, I need a motion for Resolution 012819B. Craig, can you just give us a little snippet or read it again as to what the resolution is?
Yes, and I'll move this, and I think Anthony had a question about, about this, probably the board we send it?
Yeah.
So, so I move that we send the following statement to our legislators, the governor. "In order to continue the advancement and improvement of education for our students, as well as to keep pace with current increases in inflation, Beacon City School District Board of Education advocates for the overall $2.2 billion increase in state aid as proposed by the New York State School Boards Association. Our district has been on the path of offering upgrades that help students. This includes controlling class sizes to improve student-teacher interaction, adding electives urged by our student population, ensuring equity and coping with unpredictable physical plant issues. We continue to be limited on the property tax side by the nominal 2% tax levy cap and concerns of senior and lower-income taxpayers, making increases in state aid crucial for these strategies to be made real."
I need a motion?
Motion.
Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, Alyssa.
Alyssa? Comments or questions?
I'm, I'd just like to comment that I am not on the committee that developed this, but I attended it that night and was able to hear their thinking behind it. And I think it's a great way to start off advocating and putting the, our, our goals as a district and in the area on the map with our legislators.
Any other comments?
I have a question also. So the number you came up with came from NISBA, you said? So it's not, we're not using the calculation anymore, or, or that's from the con, you remember that, that whole formula?
The foundation aid, foundation aid. It includes...
Oh, that's, this is the total number. There's a, if you break it down, there's a subset including the foundation aid and a number of other categories.
Oh, so that's a total of all those, okay.
A total of all those, yeah.
I believe there were three numbers proposed, right Craig, that we were talking about at the meeting, and we, we went with the highest one?
That was the highest one out of several that I collected. It's also the New York State School Boards Association, of which we're a member. So I thought that was probably the best, best pick.
No, I agree. Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried eight zero. We are not having a second, I think. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second was four. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried eight zero.